Good evening, Thousand Oaks, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for April 20, 2020. Let's all rise for the -- oh, actually, I've got to do the one other statement here. For viewers watching at home, most commissioners and the public are participating via video conference or telephone conference to assist the city in our social distancing efforts. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Would the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus.
Present.
Commissioner Kohan.
Here.
Commissioner McMahon.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Chair Lanson.
And I am here. Item four, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time? Seeing none?
There are none.
Thank you. I would like to make a quick comment. As you can probably see out there, this -- every Planning Commission meeting I've done so far has been different than the last, and this is no exception. We are under a different circumstance in terms of how this may look, but I want to assure everybody that the process that we're going to go through tonight with regard to the applications is no different, as if this was a regular meeting. All of the commissioners and the staff have done their usual job of making sure they're fully prepared for all the different applications. So I know this is a difficult time, but again, rest assured that everybody is going and making sure that they are doing everything possible to make sure this process is done in the same substantive and exceptional manner. So you can rest assured, we are taking care of our responsibilities to do that for the city. I don't think there are any public comments. So we will skip item five and go to item six, the consent calendar. Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes for the March 16, 2020 meeting. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments, or is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I move to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
And that was Commissioner Newman?
Yes, it was.
Without any further comments, will the Secretary prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Bus.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Kohan.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Chair Lanson. Motion carries 4-0.
Next on our hearings, we're going to switch up 7A and 7B. We had some availability issues that require us to kind of move things around, so we're going to do 7B first. Will the Secretary please call that matter?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7B, Residential Planned Development Permit Major Modification, RPMJ 2019-70628, Oak Tree Permit, OTP 2019-70662, and Landmark Tree Permit, LTP 2019-71081, to allow construction of a new 13,354-square-foot, two-story building with a new swimming pool, site-entry guardhouse, trash enclosure, retaining walls, and associated grading activities, hardscape and landscape, including the following: number one, removal of three oak trees and one sycamore tree; two, encroachment into the protected zone of one oak tree; and three, authorize a parking reduction. The project is located at 4761 Valley Spring Drive, and the applicant is North Ranch Country Club.
Thank you. The staff was Senior Planner Carlos Contreras, looking very snappy with his mask.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a request to construct a new building at 4761 Valley Spring Road. The proposed request includes the construction of a 13,354-square-foot, two-story building, an entry guardhouse, and a replacement tennis court, including grading activities, hardscape and landscape. The project also includes the removal of three oak trees and one sycamore tree, the encroachment into the protected zone of one oak tree, and also a request to authorize a parking reduction for the project. The applications are before you tonight for consideration in that the request involves the removal of three oak trees and one sycamore tree. Additionally, the proposed major modification to the existing golf facility involves a parking reduction to satisfy actual parking demands to be authorized by the Planning Commission. As such, since one application requires Planning Commission review, all associated entitlements are brought forward for your consideration tonight. Here's a vicinity map of the subject site. It is located south of Canaan Road and to the east of Westlake Boulevard, within the eastern portion of the city. With regards to the project setting and the site, the property is Zoned PL, which is public quasi-public institutional lands and facilities. The subject site indicated here in red is 13 acres. However, the actual golf course facility is actually 158 acres in area. But the project before you tonight includes two parcels that are 13 acres in area. However, the area to be impacted by the proposed redevelopment, which includes the construction of this new building and accessory structures, totals only 2 acres of that 13-acre area. The actual lifestyle center to be constructed, that 13,354-square-foot building, will compose 1.75 acres in area. The site is composed of an existing clubhouse building, and it's a 27-hole golf course with 12 tennis courts. The area impacted by the proposed project tonight does support six oak trees and five sycamore trees, a total of 11 oak and landmark trees on the property. Here is an aerial photograph demonstrating the lay of the land. As you can see, you have an access road that leads from Valley Spring Road over to the existing clubhouse and the existing tennis clubhouse. You have the existing tennis course immediately to the east of the existing tennis clubhouse, and you have the golf clubhouse in purple, and then you also have the golf course beyond that, indicated in blue. You have some residential properties located to the southeast and southwest of the proposed project site. The area demonstrated in red is the location of the new 13,354-square-foot lifestyle building. As this aerial photograph demonstrates, the residential properties immediately to the south are at a higher elevation on a knoll there. With regards to the project details, the project does include the demolition of an existing 4,352-square-foot tennis clubhouse, the demolition of existing cart paths, tennis court, stairs, walkways, and walls. It includes the construction of a new 179-square-foot entry guardhouse with a gated access, a new 721-square-foot trash and recycling enclosure, the replacement of a tennis court, because one tennis court will be demolished to accommodate this new building, and that includes also a new restroom facility for the tennis courts. New retaining walls will be proposed as part of the project. The two retaining walls won't exceed more than 6 feet in height. Associated development includes grading, hardscape, landscape, drainage basins, and driveway access modifications for the guardhouse. As previously stated, the proposed project does include the removal of three oak trees and one sycamore tree as a result of the project. Here's the site plan of the proposed project. I tried to provide some colors here to demonstrate what it is that's occurring on the site. The purple square is the proposed 13,000-square-foot new Lifestyle Center building. In the blue, immediately adjacent to the building, you have a pool. And the area in orange, just to the north of the building and to the east of the building, is the outdoor seating area where you have the lounge, bar, and cafe. And then to the top left, you have a red square. That's where the proposed trash enclosure will be located, is near all the maintenance buildings existing on the site. You have to the east, you have the proposed drainage basin for the project, and then you have the -- to the northeast, you have the existing golf course facility. To the southeast, you have the replacement tennis court that includes a restroom facility. And immediately to the south, you have residential properties approximately 150 feet to the south of the proposed building. Here's a site plan for the proposed entry gatehouse. You have Valley Spring Road to the south. The proposed building will be 120 feet from Valley Spring Road. There are some residential properties located to the east and to the west of this proposed entry guardhouse. The property to the west is 94 feet away, and it's at a lower elevation. You do have existing residential properties to the east that are approximately 175 feet away, and they're at a higher elevation. On the right-hand side, you see the elevation of the proposed entry guardhouse. It's approximately 13 feet in height and a little bit over 200 square feet in area. Here's a photograph of the subject property. This is taken from the existing golf clubhouse, looking east towards the existing tennis clubhouse. Here's a photograph that I took of the existing tennis clubhouse, looking towards the south. As you can see, the elevation where the existing clubhouse is, it starts descending towards the east where the cart path is. Here's a photograph of the existing tennis clubhouse, looking at it directly from that parking lot area. This is looking north towards the golf clubhouse -- sorry, the tennis clubhouse. With regards to the evaluation on the project, staff provides here a site plan that demonstrates the project's compliance with all development standards, including setbacks, height, et cetera. The proposed project includes a 471-foot setback to the west property line, 129-foot east right-side setback, and a 420-foot rear-north setback for the proposed building. The height is no more than 35 feet, and all the retaining walls will not exceed the maximum allowable of 6 feet in height. With regards to the protected trees, as previously mentioned, there will be three oak trees to be removed. What I've done here is, you can see that one oak tree in the green circle, just immediately south of the proposed new building, will be removed, and two other oak trees immediately east of the entry guardhouse will be removed as a result of the project. The yellow circle there indicates the location of the sycamore tree that will be removed as a result of this project. That's, in fact, where the proposed pool and spa will be located. And then on the right-hand side, you have in dash green, indicate the oak tree to be encroached on as a result of the modification to the access road and retaining walls. If I can go back for a minute on the slide for the protected trees. Staff did evaluate the oak tree and sycamore tree removal based on the recommendations by the city's tree consultant. The trees aren't suitable for transplant. Because of the existing space available at the golf course facility, it was recommended by the tree consultant that the mitigation trees be planted instead of a transplant. Staff agrees with that recommendation. With regards to grading, the proposed project includes 748 cubic yards of cut and 8,195 cubic yards of fill, and import of 7,447 cubic yards of soil. This is necessary because, as the site later will demonstrate, there's topography issues. As I previously mentioned, the pad where the existing tennis clubhouse is located is at a higher elevation than where the golf cart path is. I have a photograph here that demonstrates this. It descends. So most of the area that I highlight here in green with the existing topography is where you're going to have most of the fill occurring as a result of the project, which is why you have the 7,447 cubic yards of fill. However, with appropriate conditions, including but not limited to pre-construction meetings with neighbors, providing contact information if disturbances occur, traffic control plans, amongst other measures, the proposed grading will have a minimal impact on surrounding properties. Additionally, the municipal code limits construction hours between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, with no work allowed on Sunday. So no grading activities or truck trips are permitted to occur outside of these hours. With regards to parking, based on a parking study that was provided for the project, this proposed use would require a demand of 45 parking spaces. Currently, at the project site, there are 473 parking spaces provided. As a result of this building, 45 spaces would be necessary for this proposed building. However, staff did take the information from the parking study, and the parking study indicates that on peak hours, being that on a Saturday, there were 189 unused parking spaces documented. And then on Sunday, there were 284 unused parking spaces that were documented on the subject property. Based on the surplus of parking, staff can support the increased demand of 45 spaces on the subject site, in that it falls between the total surplus that was provided for a Saturday and Sunday, based on the parking study. Additionally, staff can support the proposed parking demand as a result of the project, and that the country club is a private recreational facility for use by a limited amount of members. There is no increase in membership resulting from the project. Currently, the club has 580 members, and a total of 600 members is the maximum. The replacement structure will provide the same purpose and capacity as a previously existing building, in that it's already a previously existing tennis clubhouse. Simply, this project will include a tennis clubhouse and pro shop, and add other amenities for the members to use. And finally, any change in the -- well, a condition of approval has been applied to the project, requiring that any change in the operation will require review and approval by the city, and will require additional parking analysis. Any future modifications at that time, staff can evaluate through an additional parking study. Here's the first floor plan of the proposed building. This is the new Lifestyle Center building. Here, you can see that they propose a locker room area on the western portion of the building. They have a bar and grill towards the northern portion of the building that's facing towards the golf course. You have a kitchen area. You have the office areas next to the tennis pro shop, and you have a 500-square-foot childcare area. On the second floor, you have additional locker room areas within the western portion of the building. You have an office area. Also, you have massage amenities provided, and you have a yoga studio and other fitness studios, and a proposed gym on the northern portion of the building. With regards to the proposed elevations, the proposed building meets all the architectural design guidelines of the city. As this elevation demonstrates, it has roofline variations. They have provided enhanced building materials. They provided enhanced facade articulation and aluminum storefronts for the building. Here are the other elevations, looking towards the north on the property and to the south. Again, roofline variation, decorative trim, wood trellis. This kind of design is consistent with buildings in the area, and this building is of similar scale and mass as the existing golf clubhouse on site right now. With regards to the landscaping, the proposed project will include new landscaping as a result of this development project. The area here in purple is where the Lifestyle Center will be located. You have the existing pool, I mean, the proposed pool, and you have a drainage basin that will be east of the existing tennis court. Basically, this project will include new landscaping, which will include the new mitigation trees to be planted as a result of the removal of the sycamore and oak trees. The guardhouse will also provide for new and enhanced landscaping, and it will be compliant with all the city's municipal code requirements for water-efficient landscaping. With regards to the CEQA environmental review, the proposed building, the 13,354-square-foot building, falls under Class II Section 15302B, in that it's a replacement building, a replacement of a commercial structure, with the new structure of the similar size, purpose, and capacity, and all existing facilities and infrastructures existing on the subject site. For the -- all the accessory structures, which includes the trash enclosure, the entry guardhouse, and the pool house, the CEQA exemption for that would be Class III Section 15303C, which pertains to new construction or conversion of small structures, including similar buildings that don't exceed 10,000 square feet. And the removal of the sycamore and oak trees will fall under Class IV Section IV of CEQA, in that it allows for minor or public alterations in the conditions of land, which not include removal of healthy mature scenic trees. Based on the CEQA analysis, staff has verified that none of the six exemptions to the use of a categorical exemption apply to this project. In conclusion, staff supports the proposed project in that the location minimizes impacts to undisturbed areas of the site, because the proposed building, the new 13,354-square-foot building, will be located in the same location as the existing tennis clubhouse. The design meets all the development standards, including setbacks, height, and wall height. The design minimizes visual impacts to surrounding properties, in that it does not exceed 35 feet in height. It has provided attractive design with enhanced building materials and roofline variations. The oak and landmark tree removals and encroaches are reasonable and consistent with the intent of the oak and landmark tree ordinance, and staff agrees with the conclusions of the city's tree consultant regarding the tree removals and the mitigation for those trees to be planted on the site. And the parking reduction can be supported in that the existing parking supply meets the actual demands. Again, the parking study demonstrates that there is a surplus of parking during peak hours on a Saturday and Sunday, and with the additional 45 parking spaces required for the project, it would be accommodating to meet the demand of those spaces for the use. Staff would like to mention that staff did receive correspondence from various surrounding neighbors. Staff received correspondence in opposition and also in support of the project. Staff did work with various neighbors regarding their questions and concerns. Various questions had to do with the scope of the work involved with the project, questions regarding golf ball safety, and also questions regarding the proposed landscaping for the proposed project, and also questions regarding the access to the site regarding the entry guardhouse. Staff feels that they went ahead and provided the necessary correspondence and information to address those concerns, and I believe those neighbors will be speaking tonight regarding the project. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve RPMJ 2019-7628, OTP 19-70662, and LTP 19-71081, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval, containing the resolution for the staff report as attachment number one. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. I just want to ask quick, were there any further public comments aside from what's included in the package? Have you received anything since then?
I did receive a letter from a separate applicant -- oh, sorry, a separate surrounding property owner, Ms. Cal Lowes, I believe her name is, and she had questions regarding the scope of the work and noticing for the project. I provided that feedback to her on Friday.
Thank you. All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Newman. I have a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Contreras, for your presentation. Regarding the height of the new center, it's 35 feet high, I believe. At that height, would any of the windows be at or near the same level as the homes to the south on Kingsborough Court?
Staff does not believe so, because we have verified that through cross-sections for the proposed building, the properties that are directly to the south are 50 feet above the elevation for the proposed building. Being that the building is only 35 feet, no windows would be up to 50 feet tall and be at the elevation of those single-family homes to the south.
So just so I understand, you're saying that whatever the highest window on the proposed center is, is 50 feet below whatever the lowest point of view of those houses to the south. Is that correct?
No. So the top of the roof of the building would be approximately 15 feet below the actual elevation to the residential properties to the south. So any window would hit up to 35 feet. In this case, no window would do so, because the 35-foot maximum includes the area where the parapets are located. And so, that being said, with the 50-foot elevation, above the pad where the proposed building will be located, staff can verify that no window would be up to that 50-foot marker.
Right. I guess what I'm getting at is, what is the actual difference between the highest window on the proposed center and the lowest window on one of those homes?
I would say approximately 15 feet below the elevation of where those homes are located. 50 feet below, 15 feet below that grade is where the windows would be located, approximately.
All right. Great. Thanks. And then with regard to the cut and fill, if my math is right, I think it's approximately 532 truck trips to do the fill, or the net fill. And my question is, would that be done all in one go, or would that be staged, or how would that work?
No. Typically, that kind of grading operation would require multiple phases for grading. I don't have the exact figures for you right now, but it typically wouldn't occur just under one day.
Okay. So there's not a single day or multiple days where 532 trucks would be going through all at once?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other commissioners wish to ask questions? Not hearing any. We'll go to the applicant, who will have 15 minutes. Please, when you speak, not come up, but speak, please state your name and city residence for the record. I believe we have Jenny. And again, I'm not a good person with names, so I'll say Duce or Deuce.
Deuce. Yeah, Deuce. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jenny Deuce. I live in Westlake Village, general manager here at North Ranch Country Club. Thank you very much for your time this evening to discuss our proposed Lifestyle Center project at North Ranch. North Ranch was established by Prudential in 1975 and originally built 18 holes of golf. The third nine was added in 1995 to give our members 27 holes. The club transferred to an equity club when the members purchased it from Prudential in 1990. At that time, the club experienced a surge of members. Many of the members who joined when the club opened in the mid-'70s to when the members purchased it from Prudential in 1990 are now in the exiting stages or starting to exit the club for various reasons, such as relocation, age, not able to use the club they once did, or injuries. We must add the amenities new members are looking for to have our incoming members outpace those leaving. Traditionally, North Ranch has been known primarily as a golf club. Our current amenities include 27 holes of golf, 12 tennis courts, and a robust social event calendar. However, the trends in the club industry clearly point to the fact that clubs must offer amenities for the entire family or must be considered a full-service club in order to survive. North Ranch Country Club has looked at adding amenities for many years. The primary reason is to drive membership by adding value, to retain our current members, and attract new prospective members. The number-one trend in the club industry, and one experts say will continue for some time, is fitness and wellness, followed by the addition of a pool and casual dining. In fact, many clubs have added these amenities some time ago, and are finding the usage was way beyond what they anticipated, and membership growth and viability increased. Thus, North Ranch Country Club is behind the curve and just now hoping to build our Lifestyle Center. Golf remains our core, but a focus on family, fitness, and wellness, and providing a fun atmosphere, will drive our club for the future. As family dynamics have changed since North Ranch was established, it's imperative that we change too. We've seen it firsthand here in Southern California. The clubs who are reinvesting their capital to encompass these elements are the ones that are thriving. Some examples of local clubs who have added these amenities over the past few years are Rolling Hills, Bel Air, Brentwood, Hillcrest, Sherwood, Saticoy, Braemar, Calabasas. Our current members want these amenities, and new families who are moving into the local area are asking and searching for these amenities at a country club. With the addition of the Lifestyle Center, we will increase employment. We anticipate with the dining outlet, swimming facilities, reception, lobby area, fitness areas, and trainers, we will add full-time and part-time staff to our employee count. I believe North Ranch is a dedicated employer in the area, and proud to say that during this COVID-19 pandemic, we have not furloughed or laid any employee off. In our ongoing community outreach, we annually send letters to the neighbors informing them of our social calendar, and we send out subsequent notices of any date changes which involve live music and supply away to communicate should they have any questions. We also sent neighbors notices of our proposed Lifestyle Center project. We hosted two open houses, inviting them to see our project plans and ask any questions of the board of directors or management. We believe even more now than ever, our club must add these amenities to thrive in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration. We appreciate the Thousand Oaks Planning Team for working with us on this project, and our architect is here as well, and we are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Deuce. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Deuce. Commissioners, any questions? I'm not hearing you, so I will ask a few. One of the tough things about wearing a mask and glasses is that it ends up fogging up the glasses, which makes it difficult to read, but I will try to ask a few questions. Ms. Deuce, I just want to ask about the pool area. Is the only entrance in and out to get to the pool is going to be through the new building?
Yes.
So there's no way kids can get out into the parking lot unless they go actually through the main entrance of the building, correct?
Correct. It'll be fenced off.
And again, I'm asking a question. I don't know if you know the answer, but again, I want to make sure that we're going forward. Are the funds already allocated and available for this project or is something you have to raise funds after this?
The membership approved us getting a loan, and we also have some allocated funds at the site. So this was approved by the membership quite some time ago, and we are anticipating using them for this.
Okay. I noticed two of the four trees to be removed are to incorporate a new guard building. Is there, what was the guard building for? Is there a concern with regard to trespassing or what's the purpose?
No, yeah, we are exposed without a gate up front. We have many, you know, we are exposed to anyone coming in, not just members. We'd like to control the access a little bit more. I think that would provide a much safer environment for our members and our staff and neighbors. So that was the point of the guardhouse and guard gate.
And lastly, I know there was at least one comment card with regard to spa operations. I don't necessarily know if that's part of this process, but what time did you intend to begin spa operations?
It would be during regular business hours, and the spa operations would be massage during the day. Most of the time, I would imagine, would be, you know, the nine-to-five business hours.
So they wouldn't be opening at 5:00 o'clock in the morning?
No, not 5:00.
Okay, that actually was one of the concerns that one of the citizens had with regard to when it was supposed to begin operation. I will go back to commissioners. Any other questions by commissioners? Having not heard any, I will then go to the public speaker.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is Commissioner McMahon. I just wanted to make sure it's clarified to everyone. The spa wouldn't be open at 5:00 a.m., but I understand maybe the gym would be open at 5:00 a.m.?
Yes, we anticipate having the gym open at 5:00.
I just wanted the general public to know the difference between the two.
Okay, that's important. So just reiterate, what would be open at 5:00 o'clock in the morning?
The gym facility, which is upstairs facing towards the golf course area.
Okay. All right, we will, any other commissioner questions? All right, we will now go to the speaker cards with regard to this issue, all of which are participating by video conference. Each speaker will have five minutes. Please again state your name and city of residence for the record. The first one I have is Brian Poliquin.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
This is Brian. I'm the architect for the project, so I'm just here for questioning.
Okay, thank you. So we'll maybe get back to you in the event there's a rebuttal. Next is Chip Humphries.
Yes, I'm the past president, 2019 president, just here for support. I live in Agora, if you have any questions.
I would assume then you're in favor of the project.
I'm in favor of the project. I have three young kids that are dying for it.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren Cohen. Or Darian Cohen?
I would assume that you're in favor of the project.
I'm in favor of the project. I have three young kids that are dying for it.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren Cohen.
Hi, I'm the current president. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm the current president, and I think Ms. Deuce covered everything. Let me mute my YouTube. Hang on, sorry. So I'm the current president of North Ranch Country Club. I think Ms. Deuce covered everything, and I'm just available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike Tingas.
Yeah, hi, this is Mike Tingas. I was a past board member for North Ranch Country Club. I've been part of the Lifestyle Center Committee for the last few years, and I'm just here if anybody has any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tingas. Mark Osala is next.
Yes, hi, if you can hear me?
We can hear you.
I just want to introduce myself. I've actually been engaged by the applicant as the development project manager to add a additional level of management during the development process, so I'm here to answer any questions.
And just for the record, your city of residence is?
Calabasas.
All right, thank you. Again, if we do, we'll let you guys talk on rebuttal if there are issues. Next, Edward Grip. Mr. Grip, are you on the phone? Oh, he couldn't make it, okay. Oh, all right, so Mr. Grip actually had written comments that were part of the package. All right, next, Marion Callos. I'm seeing so many hand signals here. Staff is trying to see if she's on the phone. And she might be buzzing in in a second. Ms. Callos?
Yes, my name is Edward Grip. I live at 1449 Doral Circle for the past 34 years. My property is located next to the most easterly club tennis court. Over the past 34 years, I estimate, based on the current rate of one ball per day, 12,410 golf balls have landed on my property, resulting in roof damage, broken windows, and dented plaster. My guests and my family members have had several near misses. It is reasonable to assume that a large number of balls have fallen on the recent boards. The club has recognized this danger and has constructed a 30-foot-high barrier on the north side of the most easterly courts. This barrier is largely ineffective. It is constructed at the end of the golf ball's flight path when the ball is descending at approximately 45-degree angle to the ground. It is also constructed roughly parallel to the flight line of the ball. The barrier would be effective if it were located adjacent to the tee, as has been done at the Los Robles Greens and Westlake Golf Courses. If these barriers are effective at the Los Robles and Westlake Courses, a similar barrier located adjacent to the tee will be effective at the North Ranch course. For the safety of the tennis court players and the neighbors, I am asking that the permit for this project be conditioned on constructing this badly-needed safety feature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grip.
Any questions?
Any questions from commissioners from Mr. Grip? No, I don't think we have any questions right now. Thank you, Mr. Grip.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Were we able to get Ms. Callos or? We're holding on for a second. This is actually running a lot better than I anticipated. You guys are doing fantastic, by the way. Ms. Callos, is that you?
Yes.
Go ahead, you have four minutes.
Hello, I'm Marion Callos, to whom Carlos referred and was in communication with this past Friday. I was reviewing the timeline for the project and noted the following dates. October 3, 2018, the membership approved moving forward with the project. That was approximately a year and a half ago. February 1, 2019, discussion about getting feedback from members and finalizing design. That was just over one year ago. The end of February, the final plans were submitted to the City of Thousand Oaks, and the last update was almost one year ago on May 31, 2019, when talked about the new athletic center fitting into the larger golf course improvement project. So I have four questions. My very first question is, when did you first alert the neighboring properties?
Go ahead and make all your comments. We'll then have response later.
Okay. Secondly, since this is a very calm and quiet neighborhood, what are your plans for the consideration of the excess noise your project is going to create? Carlos already addressed to me that 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. would be the hours of construction every day for six days in a row, with Sundays off for months, or for how long you expect the construction period to last? My third question, are you planning some type of sound barrier during the construction period? Because despite the location of your renovation, sound travels and it will project itself into our neighborhood. And my last question, what will your plans be to deafen the increased projected noise factor post-construction? In that you will have the addition of swimming pools, tennis courts, a spa, and restroom facility? Thank you very much for your time. Again, I want to stress that this is a very calm and quiet neighborhood. Thanks for listening and considering my questions, and thank you, Chair, and to the commissioners and to Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callos. And our last one I have is Michael Reader. Who they're getting on the line? Mr. Reader, are you there?
Yes, thank you. My name is Michael Reader, and I reside in the City of Thousand Oaks. I have the property immediately south of the proposed project. Over the past few months, Mr. Contreras and I have met several times discussing the project, and we've resolved the problems of light pollution, equipment being camouflaged on the top of the building. And so I'm in favor of this project. I don't have any real problem. But I did notice in the staff report, though, that there was no mention of the operation hours. And I brought this to the attention of Mike Tingas, who was associated with the club, and expressed my concern that being so close to the club, that 5:00 a.m. start time would be a little annoying. And over time, we came to the conclusion that we could close the south parking lot until 7:00 a.m., which would be the normal operating hours that the club experiences now. And my request would be to include this in the operating permit or the construction permit to actually have the parking lot right adjacent to my house. I'm about a 30-foot setback from the parking lot, and as you were told, I'm about 50 feet above, and sound travels up. Now, we don't know how many people will be arriving there at 5:00, how much noise they'll make, but to ensure that my standard of living is maintained, I would really appreciate if that parking lot would not open until 7:00. And since it's an athletic club, walking from the main parking lot shouldn't be too much of a problem, a little extra exercise. So thank you for my consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Reader. That was all of the public speakers I had on this matter, so we'll go back to staff. Mr. Contreras, did you have any further comments and responses?
Staff does have a few responses for these comments that were provided. With regards to Mr. Grip and the comments regarding the tennis court and the golf ball issue, there will be fencing provided for the new tennis court. I mean, fencing proposed for the tennis court will be similar to that that is existing right now for the existing tennis court facility. But based on this project, because it only affects the tennis clubhouse itself, staff does not see a nexus as to requiring the applicant to modify elements of the actual golf course facility for this particular project. If the applicant were to choose to make modifications to the golf course facility itself in a future date, staff would consider those kind of conditions for a proposed modification at that time. With regards to the comments that Ms. Callos provided regarding excess noise and construction, staff did provide a construction management plan to Ms. Callos, indicating the proposed staging and the proposed timelines for the proposed construction of this project. Additionally, with regards to that, the applicant can speak more to the proposed timelines for construction and indicate how they're going to reduce any kind of noise issues regarding construction for the proposed project. With regards to the sound barrier, the applicant did design, after various iterations of the proposed floor plans on the project, they did locate the outdoor seating areas that are more, I'd say, more noise that would result in more noise impacts facing towards the actual golf course, opposed to facing towards the residential properties to the south and the southwest. Yes, there is a pool facility. However, the pool operations and any other associated operations will be required to comply with the underlying approvals for the underlying residential development permit that was first approved for the construction of the facility, and also for the SUP, the special use permit, that was required for any special events on the subject property that had conditions regarding noise. With regards to the noticing of the project, staff did indicate that there were various times when this project was noticed. Initially, when this project was submitted for a pre-application consideration, it was on the Development Activity Report that's available to the public, indicating the proposed project to the residents of Thousand Oaks. However, once the formal application came in and staff was able to deem the project complete, there was a notice of application, a small sign posted on the property on December 11, 2019. And then another large sign indicating the proposed scope of the work was posted on the subject property on December 12 of 2019. And then on January 9, 2020, the notice for the proposed project was mailed to all the property owners within 500 feet of the project site. And then on April 6, the notice of hearing was published in the city's paper. So that's the timelines for the noticing for the project after formal submittal of an application. With regards to Mr. Reader's comments on the operating hours, staff did indicate that the proposed new clubhouse would be operating under the same capacity as previously existing for the actual golf course facility. The applicant did provide, the applicant did provide the hours of operation for the facility as follows. One second here. So the facility itself, the gym will be operating Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The pool facility would be operating from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the winter and the fall, and then 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. during the spring and summer. The grill and bar area for the pool will be operating Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. during the winter and fall, and 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. during the spring and summer, Monday through Sunday. These are the operating hours that are consistent with what's existing out there right now. So staff felt comfortable with the proposed hours and that they're consistent with existing operating hours for the existing club facility. That concludes staff's response to the comments that were provided by the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. One housekeeping matter for all of you on the line. Please mute yourself in the event you're not speaking, just so we don't have any of the backup noise. We should now go to the applicant for rebuttal of any additional information. Ms. Deuce, are you still there? I said that probably a little quickly. There we are.
Hi, I guess the comment about reaching out to the community, we did send multiple letters from the club. I also sent letters to all the neighboring HOAs and asked them if they wanted me to speak at any of their HOA meetings. I'd be happy to meet with the residents to answer any questions that they should have. So we've done quite a bit of outreach in order to try to get, you know, the information out to the neighbors should they have any questions. Regarding sound barriers, probably Brian Poliquin would probably be best to answer that. But I know we do plan on having some vegetation screening and certain retaining walls in certain areas to, you know, try to mitigate some of the noise, particularly from like the pool area.
You want to have Mr. Poliquin speak to that issue now?
Sure.
There we go. Sorry, just trying to get the mute button right. As far as we have the, most, the pool is entirely fenced with pilaster and fencing with plant material around the perimeter, so it's fairly well-screened. So it's fairly well screened and hidden away. And we tried to really position the whole building so that most of any sound activities would occur toward the club and off to the tennis court, but not occur to the back parking lot.
And I was going to also see if Mr. Tingas wanted to respond to Mr. Reader's comment with regard to some understanding of not using the south parking lot.
We, I can answer on that. Mike and I talked about that earlier. And they're agreeable not to have the south parking lot open at 5:00 a.m. and that there's a gate entry from the club direction, which is to the north, that people can enter into and then go into the lifestyle center from the side on the west side. And that way, we can avoid having people at 5:00 a.m. coming through the doors and parking in that parking lot on the south end. So when I talked to Mike about that, he said they were, the club would be agreeable to operating that way. So the main doors, which are on the south parking lot, wouldn't open till 7:00 a.m.
All right, so I want to make sure we have an understanding. This would be a condition as part of the process and our wonderful city attorney, Mr. Heager, is actually writing down information to recite back into that. So, Ms. Deuce, is that your understanding that the applicant would be agreeable to that provision?
Yeah.
All right, so, and the entrance then between 5:00 to 7:00 would be through, not the main road, but the side entrance?
Through the west entry.
Okay. And that was in between the hours of 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. every single day of the week?
Correct. And the access to the building happens on the north. So it's access to the, basically to the site through gates on the north and access to the building on the west.
I'm looking at Mr. Heager. Do you need more? Want to say it one more time?
Oh, this is Mike Tingas. I can fill in the blanks there. So basically, Mike and I spoke earlier, and so it's pretty simple. Well, basically, the access to the fitness center will come off of the main parking lot. And so the entrance to the south, which is below Mr. Reader's house, there will be no access there between 5:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. The access will come from the north side of the building, which is close to the existing clubhouse.
So I'm just trying to make it visually. So people are between 5:00 and 7:00 after they go through the guard gate, they would turn left into the western entrance to the parking lot, park in the main parking lot, and then walk to the building across the way, across the street, right?
Correct. As you drive into the country club, you would basically go to the main entrance and park in front of the main entrance and then access athletic center that way.
All right, so that was the confusing part is, are people driving through the main street all the way up to the country club? Or are they supposed to enter that side secondary parking lot and go up?
No, they'll be, they'll be going to the main parking lot. They just won't go to what we call the, kind of a tennis parking lot now.
Okay, all right. So then that's just, that access point would be the main route?
Correct.
So if I may, Chair, and for the planners and for the applicant itself, I think we would do next in order, probably just go with 118, which is, I have conditions up to 117. And the condition title would be, "South Parking Lot Access Restrictions." And the condition would read that applicant will prohibit or restrict parking in the south parking lot from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Sunday through Saturday. I think that covers it.
I think that does. Ms. Deuce says the official applicant, is that something you're agreeable with on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
All right, I've kept the other commissioners at bay too long. So other commissioners, do you have questions for the applicant?
So I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'll go ahead and proceed.
I think we lost you.
Chair Lanson, do I have permission to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Contreras, thank you very much for your presentation. My question would be, I know we're talking a lot about the 5:00 a.m. start time for the gym. What time does the tennis court currently start? And my other question is, is at the guard gate location, did anybody, any of the neighbors have any concerns about having a guard gate and having people stop there all the time at 5:00 a.m.? Can you just answer those two?
I believe the applicant can provide more information regarding the hours for the, you mentioned the gym, right?
Well, I was asking what the current hours right now. I know golfers get there very early in the morning, but I was curious what time tennis starts? Because that's the closest activity to where the pool, the gym are now, would be the tennis courts right now.
Yeah, my understanding is that the proposed tennis court facilities would offer the same hours as a gym. However, the applicant can give you more detailed information regarding those hours that are existing and also will be proposed. I can give you, I could provide feedback on the entry guardhouse question you had. Staff did not receive any correspondence or questions of concern regarding the entry guardhouse and vehicles being stacked there. It is located approximately 180 feet away from Valley Spring Road. And based on the design of the and the location of the entry guardhouse and where the gate is located to the north of the guardhouse, it complies with all the city's development standards and our city public works department, our transportation planner was okay with the proposed design. And as such, staff does support the proposed design of the entry guardhouse with the vehicle stacking as proposed.
Copy that. I just knew there was somebody about 94 feet away. I'd like to go ahead and address my question to the applicant then. What are the current hours of the tennis location? And are they different or would they be different than the pool and the intended gym?
Thank you. Yeah, tennis is traditionally is open, you know, daylight to 10:00 p.m. But oftentimes during the week, it's more of an 8:00 o'clock start. On the weekend, it's a little earlier, sometimes around the 7:00 o'clock time. It's usually not before 7:00, though, traditionally outside. So 7:00 a.m. is usually the starting time.
Okay, thank you.
Other commissioner questions?
Commissioner McMahon here. I would have a favorite ask of Mr. Contreras. I am a visual person. I would love it if you could put the site plan on and just point out the, to me, the the south parking lot, the main parking lot, and the route that a person would take at 7:00 a.m. and at 5:00 a.m. to get from one area to the other, if you wouldn't mind.
No problem, Commissioner McMahon. So I have the site plan here, but I think what would probably be best to demonstrate this would probably be this aerial photograph, a bird's eye view of the facility looking to the north. You have that access road to the south of where the golf clubhouse is. That access road is, extends from where the proposed entry guardhouse is, as it's located near Valley Spring Road. So you drive up the access road and you can either go ahead and maintain access, vehicle access to the facility and park in the western portion of the site where you see the big parking lot area. I'll use my arrow here. This is the parking lot area, the main area, in front of the actual clubhouse, golf clubhouse. And there's another option to park within that parking lot area between the residential properties to the south and the existing tennis clubhouse where it's at today. And so typically, any kind of, any member can gain access to the facility from either parking lot on the west side or on the east side, immediately south of the tennis clubhouse. That's the typical access to the site right now.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? I had one and I'll make it.
I've got one more, Mr. Lanson, as well.
Go ahead.
My question is, do we have any renderings of what the actual fencing will be around the pool? I know we're talking about fencing. I don't know if it's going to be, is it, is it, is it a cinder block wall? Is it, what's it composed of?
They are pulling out their books. Hold on a second.
It just wasn't clear to me from the description, so.
Bear with me for one second. We did, staff did receive various cross-sections of retaining walls and fence plans. I'm just going to try to get you to the right sheet under the attachments that were provided to you.
You got it.
Yes, so staff did receive the section of the fences. It doesn't give you great detail. It just gives you the actual height of the fence and its location relative to the proposed retaining walls. If you go under your project plan attachments, which is attachment number?
Five.
Yes. If you go to the.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. It's not detailed enough for me. That's why I was curious, because one of the, one of the public speakers was asking about, about sound coming out of there. So I was just curious if we had, if we had a better answer for them.
The type of fencing that's going to be surrounding the perimeter of the pool is primarily wrought iron fencing. And to the, immediately to the east of the outdoor seating area, between the tennis courts and the actual building, you're going to have two retaining walls that are stacked, no more than six feet in height each wall.
Any other questions, Commissioner Bus?
Yeah, like I said, it was just difficult to visualize. I don't, because when I was out at the facility, that landscape's going to change so much. They're going to fill in, you know, like, like we just said, what, 7,000 tons or so of earth? So I was just curious if we had a good representation of that. But I appreciate your time. Thank you.
One thing I wanted to, and again, I'll get back to any other commissioner questions, but I wanted to make sure they were clear. I know we keep referring to the south parking lot. Is that a sufficient description for all of us, specifically the applicant, as to what that specifically refers to? Or is there a better designation we should use? Ms. Deuce?
The south parking lot or tennis parking lot is what we associate with that.
So say that one more time?
The south parking lot or the tennis parking lot is kind of what it's commonly referred as.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it's technically not as south, so I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing so that somebody can't, you know, later on say that there was some ambiguity about it. Any other commissioner questions?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
This is for the applicant, Ms. Deuce. You described the number of membership, currently 580. How many members do you expect to have with this new addition of the fitness and health facility?
Sure. We hope that we are able to fill in the voids of people wanting to leave, kind of like, but our membership is capped. Our bylaws do not allow us to have over a certain number of members. And so we have members that are wanting to leave, and we're looking to fill those in with active members. And we do have some treasuries. We have some, you know, members that have exited or, you know, surrendered their memberships. We do have some open slots, but we are capped by our bylaws. So we're not really trying to gain a ton of members, trying to fill in the ones that are empty and maintain a healthy, viable membership.
Thank you. And is the cap 600 members?
For the full golf category, yes, 600 is our cap.
Great, thank you. And a question to staff regarding that, with the parking analysis, does it take in consideration of the cap of 600 persons?
Sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
Yes, the question is regarding the number of members of 600 at the cap rate. Does a parking analysis take in consideration the current 580 members or the 600 cap amount?
The actual parking study took into account the existing parking supply that's, that's provided on the subject property and the actual square footage of the proposed building and what the demand would be. It didn't, it didn't specifically use membership as that, to come up with the figure of the actual demand for parking. It was based on the square footage.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? I had one for probably Ms. Deuce. From what I read, I understood that the golf hole that is immediately adjacent to the tennis club is going to be redone and make it a par three instead of a par four. Is that correct?
There's been many revisions about what we might do with the golf course, and our golf course project committee is working on a potential full course remodel at some point in the future. And so, yes, there's been iterations of a par three, there's been iterations of a par four, and still working through all of that. So it will change from what it is now, but obviously that's in a later phase.
Mr. Grip made some comments with regard to some issues regarding golf balls. Is part of your evaluation going to incorporate that concern?
It definitely will. The tee will move as well as the angle that the members hit from the tee box. So I certainly will, will take that into consideration when we, when we do go change that hole.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
If I may.
Mr. Heager?
Yes, and Ms. Deuce, this is for you as the applicant, just to make sure we're clear also for the commissioners. So the condition number 118 would be, "South Parking Lot Access Restrictions." That is the title. And it would read, "Access to South Parking Lot or Tennis Court Parking Lot will be prohibited for members and guests from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Sunday through Saturday."
Correct.
Any further questions from the commissioners?
If staff can answer the question more clearly for Commissioner Bus regarding the fencing and the fencing plan and the details.
Please.
If you go to the project plans under, the site plan for, under sheet AP-1.3A, you have the proposed site plan there, enlarged site plan, and it will revert you over to sheet AP-1.4A, which gives you the details of the actual fencing around the perimeter of the, of the, of the pool and the building. And as these plans demonstrate, it gives you pilaster with wrought iron design, no more than six feet in height, and it has decorative caps on top of the pilasters.
Mr. Bus, did that satisfy or did you have a follow-up?
You got it. That actually, that's actually perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other questions by the commissioners? Not hearing any. We will go ahead and close the public hearing, our public comment part of the process. And I open the floor up to commissioners for comments or a motion.
All right, since nobody's going, I'll go first. I think that this, it's actually the first time I've been up to North Ranch Country Club. I've been to a number of the other country clubs around. I was actually surprised that they didn't have a pool or these kind of facilities. So I do think it is something that is important for them and important for, for the community itself, for like the fact that it's going to add jobs to our community and, and modernize something of an institution around here. With that said, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve our MPJ 2019-70628, OTP 2019-70662, and the LTP 2019-71081, based on the findings subject to the condition of approval in the resolution in the staff report with the addendum 118.
Good job, Commissioner Bus. Anybody, any other commissioner?
Yes, this is Commissioner Kohan. I second Commissioner Bus. I think this is going to be an essential asset to the North Ranch Country Club as far as bringing younger members to the area, families and friends to the area that will need this additional health and fitness facility. So I support the use and I second Commissioner Bus's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Kohan. Any other comments? I will make a quick one then. I do appreciate the concerns raised by a few of the comments. My hope is that the redesign of the course will, especially that hole, will involve Mr. Grip's concerns. Ms. Callos raised a number of issues with regard to the noise and things that can be done to hopefully minimize the issues. The thing I'm looking at is, the reason this is here is ultimately because of parking and because of trees. And those are the only two things that actually didn't fit the existing city issues. Noise is obviously always going to be a problem, but I think that they're going out of their way to try to deal with the issue as best they can, and again, within the confines of what the code is. And again, we're not here to rewrite the law, we're here to apply it. deal with the issue as best they can, and again, within the confines of what the code is. And again, we're not here to rewrite the law. We're here to apply it. So as much as, again, I feel for her and I, again, realize that that's an issue, my hope is that North Ranch will go out of their way to make sure that they're accommodating the issue and, and obviously be nice to her in terms of mitigating the noise as much as possible. And I'm glad to hear that Mr. Reader was able to get his issue addressed and North Ranch worked with him. So with all of that, I think the country club needs to evolve. I think our area needs a, a place where kids can actually play and do various other things as part of a country club environment. So with that, I would be in favor as well. So Madam Secretary, please go ahead and prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohan?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
As this is a decision-making process, we have to give the appeal notice. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. And that is approved. As you're looking at home, I told you this would look the exact same and feel the same as any other meeting, because we're actually going through things, even though it looks a little different. We'll go back to 7A now. Madam Secretary, would you please open the public hearing for 7A?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 7A, special use permit SUMJ 2019-70323, and underground utility waiver UUW 2019-70324 to allow for the expansion of a previously approved food distribution center, including a 4,676 square foot addition and remodel to the existing building, new outdoor patio, parking lot and site improvements, and six waivers of development standards as follows. Number one, underground utility waiver. Number two, increased building coverage. Three, requirement abutting R-Zone. Four, decreased landscape in setback areas. Five, wall heights and locations within setback areas. And six, decreased parking stall size. The project is located at 95 North Oakview Drive, and the applicant is Manna Conejo Valley Food Incorporated.
Thank you. Senior Planner Kristen Rice is presenting on behalf of the staff.
Yes, thank you. As Lori mentioned, although I'm not going to talk too much specifically, but just to reiterate, the request includes the expansion of a previously approved food distribution center, 4,676 square foot addition and remodel to the existing building, along with outdoor and parking lot improvements and the following six waivers. The subject site is located at 95 North Oakview Drive, which is north of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and south of East Hillcrest Drive at the intersection of Chiquita Lane and Oakview Drive. The site consists of 0.3 acres and is currently zoned PL, which stands for public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities. The site is currently developed with a multi-story building and parking lot, and it is surrounded by commercial development to the south. There is a Napa Auto Parts store. There's an auto resale building to the south and a Toyota dealership to the south. And there is also residential duplexes to the west, single-family homes to the north, and some apartments to the east. This request involves the expansion and associated waivers to development standards of a previously approved food distribution center project, which was approved per special use permit 2016-70124, and per the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2803A, planning commission approval is required for a special use permit major modification. On June 28th, 2016, City Council approved a zone change and special use permit for Manna to allow a zone change from R2 to PL, and to allow for the operation of a nonprofit, nonprofit agency for emergency food distribution at the subject property. It's important to note that this special use permit is still active and valid. If the current approval is not approved, Manna can still occupy the site as was previously approved. Following approval of the entitlements, Manna purchased the Oakview property and completed an assessment of its suitability to accommodate their existing operations and anticipated future needs. They determined an expansion and reconfiguration of some of the interior and the exterior spaces was necessary to enable the site to effectively fulfill their purpose. On April 22nd, 2019, the project architect submitted applications on behalf of Manna for a special use permit major modification and underground utility waiver. Staff determined that the initial design did not meet city standards, codes, and policies. Generally, we felt that the proposed design was probably too intense for the project site, and multiple waivers would be required to proceed with their proposal. On August 28th, 2019, revised project plans were submitted. The redesign incorporated changes to the colors and some of the materials on the building. Additional landscaping was included in the parking area and improved ADA access, and an operational statement and parking analysis was provided. One of the previous waiver requests was withdrawn and eliminated per this revision. And then on January 14th, 2020, revised plans were submitted again, and these were specific to address concerns from the Public Works Department regarding the public right-of-way and sidewalk realignment along Chiquita Lane. On March 31st and April 3rd of 2020, revised plans were submitted again with further refinements at staff's request to reduce two additional waivers in terms of landscaping and parking. The existing building was constructed in the 1960s. In fact, the portion there on the left is the original portion of the building, and the portion on the right there was a later addition constructed in the 70s. It's designed in a Gothic-style revival architecture. And in this elevation, this is the existing landscaping and planters out front, and it also includes an ADA ramp up to this entrance. These are two additional photos of the site. On the left one, I'm standing from Chiquita Lane in the middle of the street, looking towards south of the building. And on the right, this is a view from inside of the parking lot, looking east. This is a photograph of the southern portion of the building, where you can see the driveway exits from the property onto Oakview Drive. This is also a good photo to show where the existing utility pole is located, which is also within the city's public right-of-way. The proposed development involves partial demolition of the existing building, and I will try to go and show that to you. Let me see. There we go. The existing portion of the building is delineated by these diagonal shaded areas. This portion and this portion right here. The development involves the remodel of, in addition to the existing building, parking lot, and site improvements. The existing building is just over 3,000 square feet and consists of two floors, a main sanctuary, and a basement. The site is accessed via one driveway along Chiquita Lane, and then vehicles enter in and exit out through the egress on Oakview Drive. The proposed, the proposed 4,700, 4,676 square foot addition includes a new basement, areas for receiving and sorting, and warehousing, and a pantry, which is shown in the gray area. This is the new portion of the addition. And then this portion right here, the existing portion of the building, would be used, the upper floors for the general office area. And then on the main floor, where you see these rectangular boxes down here, this is where the indoor trash enclosure is stored. So it's a roll-in and roll-out trash enclosure. Site improvements include a new partially below-grade outdoor patio where patrons arrive to check in. So that area is up here. There's two ways to enter into this area. One is along the entrance along Chiquita. You can kind of see the, what's marked as the ADA pathway, but it comes down to an opening here, and this is the outdoor patio. You can kind of see the, an overhang dashed line here. This is where patrons would check in. And then they go around to the building, to the front of Oakview Drive, to where this door is, and this is where they enter into the pantry area. This area, since this is partially below grade, the slope is, the lot is slightly sloped, where down here it's much lower and slopes upward towards Chiquita Lane. So this area becomes partially below grade and is surrounded by retaining walls here on the property line, and then a green screen is built on top. You can't quite tell very well, but the outer portion, which is the inside portion of this patio, there's actually a planter here so that they can plant landscaping, which will grow up and grow into the green screen that's visible from the public right-of-way. One last thing, the parking lot improvements include new striped parking stalls, landscape planters, and the accessible handicap stall and pathway, and a loading zone. These are the proposed floor plans. This is an additional slide, since what was sent to the planning commissioners earlier this afternoon, just to note that. There are multiple levels proposed consistent with the multiple levels that exist on-site right now. The floor plans to the left is the area of the basement. The dashed line that you see right here, this is the area of the basement that exists today. And so you can see the amount of area that is proposed. The middle portion of the building, which is the main floor, contains the receiving area. And then the pantry is located down towards the bottom of the slide, which is actually the northern portion of the addition. And this, again, is where the trash enclosure area is. The upper level, which in the pantry, this is open to above, over here is, on the southern portion of the property, is where the office space is located. These are the proposed elevations for the project. The rendering at the top is the proposed east elevation, which is visible from Oakview Drive. The proposed elevation on the bottom is for the west elevation, so this is as if you would be standing within the inside of the parking lot. This is probably the better elevation to kind of get a feel for where the outdoor patio is located. And then I also have another perspective on a slide coming up, so you can get a good idea of how the site would be developed. This, on the top, is the proposed north elevation. So this is as if you were standing on Chiquita, looking south. And then the elevation on the bottom is the south elevation, which is to remain as it is, as it is, as it exists today. And lastly, these are two perspective views. The top view is looking down on the proposed project in an aerial view, as if you were standing above the driveway entrance along Chiquita Lane. The perspective on the bottom is, is approximately if you were standing at the intersection of Chiquita Lane and Oakview Drive, looking south along the, along the street side. Manna's operational uses, general hours of operation, hours of food distribution, number of employees and volunteers are all consistent and all remains the same with the previously approved special use permit. The only change that's being requested is in regards to the specific days of food distribution, which would be Tuesday, Wednesday, and potentially Saturday they would use if they have excessive demands. The previously approved special use permit was for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. So this is actually done so that the hours of food distribution can alternate with the hours of individual drop-off deliveries. Street, so the next slide talks about street improvements. They were required to do street improvements for this proposal because of the proposed modifications to the site and the proposed addition. These improvements were not required previously because the original special use permit only included them to go in to the existing building as a tenant improvement. So the proposed project includes the design and construction of street improvements, including new curb gutter, five-foot-wide sidewalks along the frontage of Chiquita Lane and Oakview Drive. They're also going to be doing a five-foot-wide dedication along Oakview Drive, and that's shown here on this slide in blue. So the existing property line is this dashed red line that's on the outer portion, and then the dedication would move the property line to this inner dashed line. And they'll also be required to install a curb access ramp for the Public Works Department condition at the intersection. These proposed plans have been reviewed and conceptually approved by the Public Works Department. The next slide is in regards to parking. The Thousand Oaks Municipal Code does not contain specific parking standards for a food bank. However, the code does allow that when there are multiple uses within a project site, the parking calculation can be derived by adding together the amount of parking spaces required per individual use. In this case, the proposed uses include 1,122 square feet of general office, 3,404 square feet of warehousing and storage uses, an 825 square foot pantry area with bathroom, and the other incidental uses, such as the trash enclosure area, the refrigeration and the freezer area, do not require additional parking spaces. 14 parking spaces are proposed on-site, which include a new handicap parking space that does not currently exist on-site today. The general office and pantry uses were calculated at a 1-per-250 parking ratio, and the warehousing and storage uses were calculated using a 1-per-1,000 parking ratio. One important thing to note is that approximately 72% of the building would be devoted to warehousing and storage uses, which generally require very little parking. So the only areas of the proposed project that require a typical amount of parking would be for the 825 square foot pantry area, which is about the size of a four-car garage, and the general office areas, in which case they, they have very few employees that would be working in the office on a day-to-day basis. It's still the same number of employees that was consistent with the previous approval. Manna provided a parking analysis for their operations to determine whether there was a sufficient number of parking spaces, and it was included in the packet as attachment number eight. The analysis demonstrates that Manna's operations are sequenced in such a way to minimize overlap of services, thereby reducing the number of spaces required. For example, individual donation drop-offs occur on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, while the pantry is open for food distribution on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Another example is that the hours for major deliveries are scheduled to occur prior to the start of food distribution. One condition of the original special use permit approval required Manna to provide a loading zone area. Therefore, the applicant is proposing a 12-by-25-foot loading zone area, which is intended to serve the larger delivery trucks. And it's purposely positioned in this location so that they can drive up and park right in front of the roll-up door. That's what this, this little rectangular area is right here. There's actually, can't quite see it on the red line, but there is a roll-up door right there on the western side of the building. on the western side of the building. We did recognize that the location of the loading area is over proposed parking stalls, but because the hours for these major deliveries are designed to occur prior to the start of food distribution, we don't anticipate there to be any problems with overlapping of people needing to park there during this time. We also prefer the location for the loading zone area to be located on site and not within the public right of way as it is currently located now. The city's architectural design guidelines require that the architecture design blend in with the surrounding area using muted earth tone colors, coordinated building design on all elevations, significant wall articulation, and enhanced landscape elements among various other designs. The design of the building has been through numerous refinements over the years, even before a formal application was submitted, was submitted to the city. Staff initially expressed concern over the original design, which was more matching of the original architecture of the building with the beige and or the beigeish yellow colors and the red colors that exist there today. Their initial proposal also had a couple different architectural styles. There was some Gothic style to in keeping with the original portion of the building. And then there was also another portion that was more contemporary in design, which was the middle portion. So staff recommended that the applicant revise the architecture so that it was a bit more harmonious. So while the square footage of the proposed addition has not really changed during the process, the applicant has made several changes to the skin and the exterior of the building to address staff's concerns. The current design includes the use of the earth tone colors that are required. Instead of the concrete exterior, which was originally proposed for the, the middle portion of this building, they are proposing to put hardy plank siding onto the concrete to match the existing portion of the building that exists here on the southern portion. They're also proposing wood trim, cornices, and a plaster finish along the northern portion of the building, which is where the pantry is located. And they've changed the design of the roof, which was originally proposed as a flat roof, but with a parapet to hide the mechanical equipment. So this has more of a pitched design to match the other roof angles that exist on site and are as proposed. Another important aspect of this proposal is landscaping. Currently, the landscaping that exists on site today is what's here and shown along Oakview Drive. These are in the planters. There is no landscaping in the parking lot as it, as it exists today. And there is a front lawn area that's fenced in at the intersection of Chiquita Lane and Oakview Drive. In this proposal, the applicant is proposing landscaping on all sides of the building. The landscaping at the intersection up here, when it grows up into the green screen, will, will provide a nice element to kind of help the building and the improvements blend in with the area. And then the addition of these planters within the parking area is a code requirement that there be at least 10% of landscaping within the parking lot provided. Also want to note that due to some of the changes, specifically these in the parking lot, which was done fairly recently, the landscaping plan that was provided as part of the plans is a bit outdated now. So staff has included several conditions of approval to ensure that those landscaping plans be revised so that they match the current design. And the applicant will also be required to submit a landscape plan check, plan. Now I'd like to go over the waiver requests. The first waiver request is for the underground utility waiver. Section 7-5.203 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code allows for the waiver of undergrounding utilities in certain circumstances. Currently, there are existing overhead lines which serve the businesses along Oakview Drive and also the residential properties to the north. We are aware, due to some recent research, that underground utility waivers have been issued for the apartments that are located across the street. And staff is supportive of the request for this waiver because we do believe that it is cost prohibited in that it would cost approximately 10% of the final development project costs. The second waiver request is to increase the amount of building coverage on this particular lot. The maximum building coverage allowed in the PL zone is 25%. And the applicant is proposing to add such that the property building, such that the building coverage would be 31%. That is though with taking into account the dedication. So it would be a little bit less of a percentage if we did not count the dedication. Staff has expressed some concerns that the size of the addition is, is large, but we do understand that is a crucial operation, crucial to the operation and anticipated future needs of Manna. The third waiver request regards the code requirement that walls be installed when they abut residential zones. Following the final, the final plan submittal for this project and the staff reports going out, the applicant has made us aware that they are willing to replace the existing wood fence that's located along a portion of the abutting residential property. And they would like to construct the six foot high solid wall as required for, as required to meet the code requirement. So, but in this case, we do have a condition of approval still requiring that. We can keep that in the resolution as is. And when, and if they were to submit revised plans moving forward, they would need to include that as part of their plans. The fourth waiver request involves the minimum amount of landscaping that's required in setback areas. Section 9-4.3203D requires each building in the PL zone have a landscaped front and corner side yard of not less than 20 feet exclusive of vehicular paving and areas for vehicle use. So in this particular slide, this is approximately where the 20 foot area is located within 20 feet from Chiquita Lane and then also 20 feet from Oakview Drive. In this particular case, the existing building is actually legal nonconforming such that you, you can't comply with this requirement along Oakview Drive because the building encroaches within 20 feet. They're also proposing to keep the landscaping that exists on site today in these planters. And then in this area along Chiquita Lane, they're proposing to have the addition less than 20 feet from Chiquita Lane. So without reducing the proposed addition and reducing even a portion of the existing building, they wouldn't be able to meet this requirement. But it was their intent to add landscape planters along the interior portion of the patio area that can grow up and then grow into the green screen. And so you can still have that sort of look as if there, if there is landscaping when you are looking at the site from the public right of way. The fifth waiver request involves the wall heights and the location of the walls that are located in this portion here, basically in the corner of the property. So the code requires that a fence, wall, or hedge not exceed six, not exceed six feet in height and may be, but may be located or maintained along the side lot lines and may not be closer than 10 feet from the front property line. Ultimately, because these walls are proposed on the property line, that is the request that they are asking for, is to build these walls not 10 feet from the property line, but directly on the property line. These walls also in some instances are taller than six feet, but that's because they are measured from the inside of the patio, which is below grade. So in the retaining walls in the patio are generally three to three and a half feet in height. But then when the green screen that's built directly on top of the retaining walls, which would be required actually for the building code so that nobody walking on the, along the sidewalk falls into the patio area, make the height of the wall plus the green screen taller than six feet in some locations. Because the lot slopes a little bit, some of the walls in some portions are going to be taller than others. And then gradually, as you come down further south along Oakview, they're going to get shorter in height. So they're only requesting this waiver in certain portions of the lot. I mean, certain portions of the length of this linear wall. The last waiver request has to do with parking stall dimensions. There are currently 17 parking stalls located on site. All of them are legal nonconforming in terms of length and width for many reasons and in many different locations. Two of the parking stalls on site are actually located within the city's public right of way. And they're about half the length of what you would need for a parking stall. You could maybe fit a golf cart or a Mini Cooper in them. So those two parking spaces automatically had to be removed in order to construct the driveway entrance and install the five foot sidewalk as required for street improvements. And then when the addition of the handicap space was included, this also required the area down here, the additional area that you need to get out of the car. So because of the street improvements and the handicapped area, they automatically lost three parking spaces. The Thousand Oaks Municipal Code though, requires that compact stalls be at least 11 feet, four inches wide by 17 feet deep for 45 degree angle stalls, which are what are proposed. In order to, well, first, they are currently proposing nine by 18 parking stalls, which for most codes are fairly standard parking stall sizes. The 11 foot 14 by 17 is fairly onerous compared to many other cities and counties' codes. But because, because the code also allows for the city to approve modification to the parking space provisions, staff does feel that the improvements that the applicant has made to the existing parking lot would be sufficient. One other thing to note that as part of this design, they are proposing double striped parking stalls with, which don't currently exist on site as it is. So in order to meet the street improvements, improve the handicapped access, which was required, they are providing the number of parking spaces that they can possibly park on site. If we were to ask them to widen the parking spaces, because that is what the deficiency is, they would lose additional parking spaces on site. And staff feels that, we feel that the nine by 18 parking stall dimension is a reasonable size to accommodate the use and the vehicles that would be entering the site. So we feel that it would be better to have this amount of parking stalls versus having them widen the parking stalls and have less parking stalls on site. The project is categorically exempt per section 15301 existing facilities because it involves an addition that's less than 10,000 square feet. It's also located in an area where all public services and facilities are available and is not located in an environmentally sensitive area. And none of these six exemptions, exceptions to the use of a categorical exemption apply. As of today, I've received four inquiries from the public. The first inquiry that I received was after the notice of application went out last year. A member of the public was concerned about the patrons that Manna would serve and that homeless may come to the neighborhood. The second inquiry that I received was a neighbor that was very supportive of Manna's purpose, but was also concerned that the homeless would start congregating in the neighborhood again. The third inquiry that I received after the public hearing notice was sent out a few weeks ago was that they felt that the use was too intensive and they did not support the request for six waivers. The fourth inquiry that I received today was from a neighbor that also did not support the project for similar reasons, but was also concerned about the type of patrons that would be coming to the site. The required findings for the project include, the project is consistent with the city's general plan. The food distribution use and proposed improvements are allowed uses within the PL zone and is consistent with all provisions of the code with the exception of the proposed waivers. With the inclusion of several recommended conditions that staff has included in the resolution, the project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA and the proposed expansion of the previously approved use is compatible. The previously approved use and the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve special use permit, major modification 2019-70323 and the underground utility waiver 2019-7324, not including the west, the request to waive the six foot high wall on the west property line waiver, but subject to the conditions of approval in the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Rice, for that detailed report. Commissioners, questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Commissioner Newman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Rice, for your very comprehensive presentation. You mentioned in giving the report that there were multiple revisions, and I appreciate you giving the history. Seems like quite a lot of work on your part and on the applicant's part. And you characterize earlier incarnations of the plan as, quote, "too intense." So my question on this is, did any of the changes from the earlier plan result in a reduction in square footage of, of the plan?
No, they did not.
Okay, and along the same lines regarding the setback waiver, was there any discussion or consideration of reducing square footage to not, not to need a waiver on setbacks?
We did have discussions regarding that particular waiver. In order to support the needs that Manna expressed to us, they needed the, that particular amount of warehousing square footage, also the square footage for the pantry. So part of that waiver request was, do you reduce the building? Or not, you would also actually have to eliminate the outdoor patio area in order to meet that requirement, which was actually probably the, the more crucial aspect of Manna's operations. So even if they had reduced the building, they would have still needed to eliminate the outdoor patio and replace that with landscaping.
I understand, thank you. Condition 10 references grading and it's, it's boilerplate text about the need to file a grading plan. My question is, is, is there any grading, any cut or fill anticipated for the project?
There is cut anticipated for the raised pat, it's for the basement. It's located in an area where it's slightly above the parking lot area. So there is, there is area there that would need to be cut into for the construction of the basement.
Do we know approximately how much cut or fill we're talking about?
I can get back to you on that. I can get back to you on that.
Do you want to look that up while we go to other questions?
I think I found it. The grading plan, although one, part of the reason for that condition is so that they bring this grading plan a little bit more into conformance, is that they indicate the cut is 396 cubic yards.
Okay, so it's, it's 20-something truck trips.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the neighborhood is, seems to me to be pretty crowded in terms of parking, people, cars parked. How feasible would it be to amend the part, the parking requirements during construction to require construction vehicles to be parked on site? Is that a feasible requirement?
I would, I would think so. I would think that they would be able to park in the parking lot area, focus construction where the building addition is initially, so that they can park those vehicles in the parking lot. But I may want to defer to the project architect just to confirm.
Okay, and of course, when we go to the applicant, we would need to get their sign off on that anyway.
Yes.
But I do, I do think that would help reduce the, the footprint of the project, or at least constrain it within the boundaries of the project.
Correct.
The only other question I had is, is the very last attachment, this is attachment nine regarding the undergrounding waiver. And I think, I, I just, I don't understand one part of it. When, in, you're describing the, the nature of the project, there's some text about this being about cellular phone facilities on an existing water tower. Was that just something that was copy and pasted from a previous project, or, or cellular towers part of this?
Attachment nine? I don't remember having an attachment. Attachment nine?
Of the staff report, yes. This is dealing with undergrounding.
Unless if you received a wrong notice.
This isn't, this is a notice of exemption for Manna.
You, let me see.
There were nine attachments in our report. The final one is a-
Correct, I see it. The description of the nature is incorrect.
Okay, so it's not, it's, it's fine, I mean, I understand.
It's drafted and would, and has not been filed currently. So the, the nature of the project would be the exact project's description as shown on your staff report, so staff can-
Okay, so it's not, I, just to be clear, it's, it's fine, we all make mistakes.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear that there's no-
No.
Sell site component of this project.
Absolutely not.
All right. I believe that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Other commissioner questions?
This is Commissioner McMahon, and I don't know if this is appropriate for you or if I should save it for the applicant, but I'll go with you first. I'm concerned about the deliveries, the major deliveries. How big a truck makes those deliveries?
That's a good question. I would defer that to the applicant.
Okay, then I will hold off on my questions until later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, this is Commissioner Cohen. I have a question regarding the five-foot-wide dedication on Oak View Drive. Is this five-foot-wide dedication for the proposed sidewalk?
Yes.
Great. And does the proposed sidewalk go towards Tio Boulevard, or does it only run along the property line of the project?
It's only along the front edge of Oak View Drive and Chiquita.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff from the commissioners?
Yes, I've got one question. I was having trouble following when we were talking about how many parking spaces would be required and why they were, we're waving it down to 14, but I was wondering what the, the established number of parking spaces that we would anticipate them needing would be.
We would anticipate that they would need 12 parking spaces as provided by their parking analysis.
So having 14, so why, why do they need a waiver is my, I guess my question?
Because it has to do with the width of the parking spaces.
Copy that, okay, so it's not the, it's not the quantity, it's, it's the number?
Correct.
And if we get to the correct width, then we, then we're below 12?
Correct.
Copy that, okay, that's what, I, I just wasn't following that.
Any other questions from the commissioners? I have a brief kind of question. So you indicated that Manna had changed its mind, was okay with the six-foot, six-foot wall. You already have a condition in there that says that's conditional, so is there anything we need to change?
No.
So it's just, we at least leave that condition as part of that in the event we go through with that?
Correct.
And, and I'm going to basically follow my other commissioners with regard to the delivery issue. There's, there's some situations in which we will provide that deliveries can only happen certain times of the day. I don't know this kind of business, and we'll find out in a second if that's feasible. But one thing you'd said is the loading dock is actually going to be where parking spaces are. Is that loading dock going to be painted a different, you know, with colors? I mean, is there some way to identify that you shouldn't park there during time periods that the loading would end up happening then?
There currently is not on the plans.
Okay. All right, so we'll ask, we'll go to the applicant for that. Any other commissioner questions before we go to the applicant? We will now go to the applicant, who will have 15 minutes. I believe it's Mark Pettit. Please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, my name is Mark Pettit with Lauterbach and Associates Architects in Oxnard, and I think it would be appropriate first for Darren Aerosmith to talk about the operation and procedure and how they operate, and then I can come in and talk about the architecture, if that's okay with you.
Sure, it's your presentation, of course. Mr. Aerosmith?
Thank you. We have one of our speakers that has been looking at the white screen, waiting to be invited in. It's John Prescott, so if you could let somebody know that he just needs to be invited. He's been texting me stating that he's still waiting to be invited. There he goes, right there. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and it, right now, especially in these unprecedented times, Manna has just really seen what, what things, how things can impact our community. So this project is really important to the community. We've been around since 1971, and we've gone through multiple times in history where we had economic problems, but are, the construct of our community has changed, and we are seeing that people are living now closer to food crisis than ever before, one paycheck gone. So we're, we're, we're seeing, just in the last 30 days, a number that's almost as a half of what we did an entire year. The project right now, the way it's designed, and Kristen has been great to work with, she is our fourth planner, and so along the way, we've been having, we've had four pre-planning meetings, and we've gone into it with the attitude of being a partner with the city, wanting to make sure that we are supportive of their vision, and that we also are looking for practicality, moreover than design or even cost for that matter. The mission is to serve the people. And so this design, after trying to put a Rubik's Cube together on a small lot, I really do feel like we have done everything we can to get as close as we can to, to meeting every single requirement that the city has asked. So I do appreciate the fact that there are a lot of waivers for, for this project, and we have put a lot of great minds together to try to, to try to get rid of those waivers. But I think that we are open-minded to doing whatever it's going to take to, to get this open sooner rather than later. I would also, just before Mark takes over, I'd like to give John Prescott just a couple of minutes to add something from his perspective, if that's okay with you.
Again, it's your presentation, of course. Mr. Prescott, are you there?
Yes, I am. John Prescott, Thousand Oaks, and I'm here to support Manna and their application. I've been familiar with the work of Manna and the location that they've been and over on, on Crescent Way for almost four, more than four decades now. They perform a wonderful service for the community, and now they are in a position where they're able to really expand that service to match the growth of the city and the growth of the need that they serve this time. The city's always had a philosophy of not providing social services directly, but rather to support local organizations, nonprofits specifically, that do provide those services to our community, and there are many examples here in Thousand Oaks. And I think the way the city has worked with Manna over the years is one of those good examples. They have found a site, and I think it's a good location for the use. I think they've done a nice job of, of trying to meet their needs, be respectful of the neighborhood, improve the property, actually to some degree. It's an older property. They'll be bringing some new architecture, some upgrades to the parking, to the landscaping, the public street improvements. Will all benefit the neighborhood. And I think, as you've heard from your staff, the waivers that they are recommending are, for the most part, very reasonable, and they have agreed to build the wall as, as recommended by staffs. I think they've really dealt with all of the waiver requests, and in my view, they're fairly minor and well within the ability of the Planning Commission to adjudicate and grant in order to bring about this really much-needed public benefit project. So with that, I just want to say that I support the Manna project and ask that the Planning Commission approve the special use permit and the underground utility waiver as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott, nice to see you again. Mr. Pettit, did you want to finish up your, your presentation?
Yes, thank you very much. As was probably mentioned, you know that it's a fairly complex program that we've got, using the existing building and significantly modifying the use of the old church. This is an adaptive reuse. Our building is going to be energy efficient, it's going to be a green building incorporating solar panels, so we're doing what we can to kind of do effective adaptive reuse. The building has a lot of uses. It has the food pantry, it has a food intake and sorting areas, it has food storage areas and other operational functions. And currently, virtually all of that happens outside at their current operation over on Crescent. So it's really important to know also that we, although we have an increased square footage, we have a basement level, so everything is still a single story. And the building actually has four different levels to it. It's pretty complex, and each one of those levels have an important function. I also wanted to mention that we have our trash inside the building, and that's to free up additional parking spaces, but also the trash is not typical, what you would see with trash. We recycle and reuse, and even the product that's out of date has, is earmarked for other uses that people come and pick up. So that's pretty important and different than a lot of other businesses. So the church sanctuary, the old small church sanctuary, will be the administrative office and with the small meeting room for staff training. We talked a little bit about, it was talked a little bit about the exterior patio, and this is designed as a staging area. Obviously, since our pantry is relatively small, that, that area is for people to kind of wait, hang out, so we don't have a lot of family members come in. And I did want to mention that when people come in, they come in by appointment, and so there's a, there's a regularity of it. So it's not, okay, we're open, you have 100 people, that doesn't happen. The other big thing on this building and on the site was to be ADA compliant. Currently, nothing is ADA compliant, including the parking lot and the building. So the parking was really interesting on how we were able to get that, so it's no more than 2% crossfall, and that demonstrated and dictated really how we had the entrance and the entrance patio and access into the building, and that's why it's set down at a lower level. So the other thing about the patio area is we have the green screen, so it's not a wall. It's, it's something that eventually will be planted through. We're looking at a certain vegetation that within six months to a year should be able to include, cover that entire wall area with a green wall, which hopefully will, will look great. And the sidewalk on the side, there was a question about the sidewalk. The sidewalk would be new, but it connects to an existing sidewalk on Oak View, which goes down to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so it's all connective. And currently, there is a gap in the sidewalk, so this project will kind of facilitate that to be all connective from elsewhere on Chiquita. So as far as the parking is concerned, typical parking in most cities is nine foot by 18, and that's what we have here. With the one-way, it works pretty well, and it's where the parking lot has been for decades and decades and decades. So we're just cleaning it up, restriping it, and having multi-function uses such as the drop-off for the deliveries. Now, the deliveries don't come in semi-tractor trailers or anything like that. Manna goes and picks it up with their relatively small vans and trucks, and that's what's going to be there. And there will be a sign certain times for deliveries that will be on the building wall in front of those parking areas that would be used for the loading and unloading. Also important to know that a lot of community members come in and drop off a bag or, or boxes of food, and so they can do that also in this area. Talking about the building massing of materials, we have gone back and forth based on a number of our planners' directions over the year, or two, or three. So we've modified the materials to be a little bit more consistent with what's in the neighborhood, our roof pitches, the materials on the roof, and everything is approximately 20 feet tall, very consistent. And remember, we opted to lower and put a basement level, so we would not be massive, we would be in the context and the scale of the neighbors. And as mentioned, we'll replace the, the fence with a block wall to meet city requirements. And like was mentioned, our goal is to improve the property and have it be an asset community to the community, and this, as you can imagine, is a multimillion-dollar project and long overdue. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Before I go to commissioners, I just want to see, is there anybody else that's part of your team, aside from Mr. Aerosmith and Mr. Prescott?
I think that's it.
Okay, we will go then to commissioner questions. Any questions of the applicant?
Commissioner McMahon?
Go ahead.
I guess I will start it off. For clarification of your deliveries, so there are Manna volunteers and Manna vans making those big pickup deliveries, is that correct?
Yeah, we have, when it comes to going and picking food up, we have a box truck that's about 16 feet, and we also have a minivan that was donated to us, and those two vehicles are the bulk of how we round- And those two vehicles are the bulk of how we round food up. We don't have any interest or desire to have any more vehicles or even increase the size of them, because those sizes actually work very well for navigating to all of the different retail partners that we have. So those vehicles are great for their size, and we need to offload them immediately. So there's, the amount of time usually is when they pull up, they're immediately emptied, and then the parking spaces would be freed up again.
So my concern was twofold. Big trucks adjacent to a residential area and many, you know, for long periods of time, it sounds like you don't have that. And the other was, when I went to the property, the exit driveway seemed very narrow to me, and then there were meters or something right there. And so I was also concerned about getting a large truck through there or many large trucks, but if it's your own drivers and there are smaller trucks, I'm a little more comfortable with that.
Absolutely. And it is narrow because of the overgrown shrubbery that's there now that is, we are intending to cut back, and there is a gas meter down there, which is not ideally located in a driveway, but that's an existing condition that we shouldn't see by the time we're finished.
Is the gas meter going to be moved?
It's my understanding that it is, yes.
That makes me feel better also. Thank you. I have no more questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Other commissioner questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Newman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant comfortable with the modification of the parking condition I suggested earlier, where we would require construction vehicles to be parked on-site during the project? Is that amenable to you?
It is. I believe that throughout the different phases of construction, that there's going to be different opportunities where we can put all of the vehicles on the property. There may be a timeframe when, during certain phases, that that is not entirely possible, but in reality, we're, our goal from day one was to be 100% self-contained within our property line. However, if there's tractors or something that need to move around, obviously, we can't necessarily have all the vehicles in their way. But that's only in the beginning stage, and after that, I don't see any problems, and we will make sure that whoever we choose as our general contractor is aware that that is part of our goal, is to keep everything contained throughout the process.
All right. The other question I have has absolutely nothing to do with this project, but you mentioned this being a time of extraordinary crisis in the community and extraordinary demands for Manna. So my question to you is, what can members of the general public do to assist Manna during this difficult period?
Well, I think that partnering and we're doing everything we can to be a resource that the city refers out, and lets people know that they can do food deliveries, you can order your groceries to be delivered to us instead of to your house. Those are individuals. We have, in the last month, we've received approximately $95,000 in personal donations. That helps, because as we start to see that the pantry changes the types of food that are available, we can go and purchase food from our retail partners, and that is in an effort to continue to deliver fresh and edible and good nutritious food to people and not just canned foods and frozen foods. So the monetary donations, especially when we have a large contingency, are, it's wonderful, because we do have the sources to get fresh produce and perishable items in and out quickly.
All right. Thank you very much. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other questions of the applicant?
This is Commissioner Cohen. My question to the applicant is regarding construction. How long of a construction phase do you anticipate for this project?
Well, Mark, do you want to take that?
Sure, that'd be great. Right now, we're looking at somewhere between 10 and 14 months, depending on the time of the year and if we have weather delays. And the couple contractors we're talking to right now have some ways that they could potentially move that quicker. Obviously, time is of the essence, so we'd like to get this thing permitted and ready to start as quickly as we can. But that's generally what we're talking about, between 10 and 14 months.
Right. And would operation continue at the same location during construction or at a different location?
Darren?
We are intending to operate on the Crescent Way property until we actually move in. So we will have our executive director, site managers, and our volunteer partners working as, until they're worn out. They're, they are really truly heroes, and they're working hard, and they will continue to do that until we can start moving stuff in over on Oak View.
Thank you.
Any further commissioner questions? Not hearing, I had two brief ones. First, with regard to the overhead electrical wires, is that ultimately the construction going to require that you modify that to the extent that you need additional electrical needs?
I can take that question. At this point right now, our power demands will be more than it is right now, but not in such a way that it would require additional power service off of that pole.
Okay. And then, second, with regard to the six-foot wall, are you acceptable now, as was indicated, Ms. Race indicated, you're acceptable having that six-foot wall?
Mark, can I take that real quick?
Go for it.
So right now, there's a wood fence that's held up by metal cemented poles that actually faces the residential neighbor to the west. So we actually don't have a wall that we're replacing, and the idea of having a nice concrete wall is appealing, and we like the idea. Kristin brought it up after it made its rounds through the city, and the proposal is totally acceptable to us, and it makes a lot of sense.
Great. I have no further questions. Any other commissioner questions? Not hearing any. We will now go to the public comment with regard to this matter. We had over 10 cards or requests to speak submitted, therefore, and all will be participating by video conference, so each speaker will have four minutes. Please, when you get your turn, please state your name and again, the city of residence. First will be Chase Rashid. Just waiting to connect him. I was told he should be there. Next one? Oh, Mr. Rashid, are you there?
Yes.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm watching the live feed, and it's behind. Yeah, I'm Chase Rashid, City of Thousand Oaks, supportive of this project. I actually live close to the new site of Manna. There's a lot of the clients that live over in this area, so parking may not be an issue if people live over in this area. They may just walk there. I've been a client of Manna. I see the clientele, it's families, seniors, really people in need. A lot of people, you know, they get done paying their rent and bills, they don't have a lot of money left over for food. I realize there is concern in the area, the neighbors, about exactly who the clientele is, but I, you know, I would tell people to rest assured that these are regular people. They have the same concerns that other people would have in the neighborhood, whether they be homeowners or apartment dwellers. So I'm supportive of the project, so, and I think it's good for the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have Kristy Werner, who I don't believe is with us. Next, we'll have Denise Cortez, who I think also is not with us. Next, Diane Kaderman. Also, I don't think she's with us anymore. Jennifer Schwaber?
She's actually our executive director.
Is she part of your presentation then, right?
I think that we would rather spend the time answering the commission's questions. I don't think she needs to present.
Okay. We'll go to the next speaker, Katie Douglas. Ms. Douglas? Oh, I was told she's not on the line anymore either. Marcia Gordon, also not with us. Patrick Finery. They're trying to connect him. For those of you at home, I'm looking up at our wonderful staff here telling me whether or not the person is on the line. I'm sure this is just scintillating TV for most of you out there right now. Oh, no, he's not there anymore either. Okay. Patty Atkinson?
I'm on the line.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Great. I've worked at, I'm an Agora resident, and I've worked at, or volunteered at Manna since 2007 on a weekly basis. So I'm very familiar with their clients, and I've found them very appreciative, very grateful, and the people that I'm grateful to be able to serve. And so I just wanted to say how much I support this whole effort to move to a better space, and I think it'll be better for experience for our clients. I think the employees, it'll be easier for them, of course, and better for the volunteers too. So it's just a situation that helps our community better serve in a more efficient way. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Engstad.
My name is Robert Engstad, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for the past 12 years and a resident of Ventura County for the past 16. My background is in real estate, supply chain management, and that also involves warehouse and distribution center layout. I have been involved in consulting with Manna's facility blueprint ideas, and for the record, please note I have been doing this on a voluntary basis. As we look back at Manna's current location, it's fraught with inefficiencies. They have been operating their best with the space they have and are especially constrained by the unpredictable peaks and valleys of food donations. It is also challenging for the general public to visit their current facility, as parking is limited, street parking is frequent, and the space inside the pantry is very small. The land they're at now is best used for residential. We move forward to the proposed Oak View Drive location and the revised blueprint, and that will change all of this. The land on Oak View Drive has not been a residential plot for many decades, making it more conducive to becoming Manna's pantry, and again, the best use of land space. Manna's handling capacity will be significantly higher, their service to the community will be significantly greater, and to all of our Thousand Oaks residents and Canejo Valley residents, I very much believe that Manna of the Canejo will become one of the flagship pantries in our country that other cities and states will want to learn from. I say this because most of you are familiar with the fame our Hill Canyon wastewater treatment plant has gained. Many other municipalities in the country have visited the Hill Canyon facility to learn from the best. Likewise, future food pantry organizations across the country will travel to visit and tour Manna of the Canejo's new facility. Thousand Oaks will have yet another facility to be proud of, something that is cutting-edge, something that is amazingly efficient. It is the possibility, this possibility, that makes me the most excited about what is yet to come to our city. I stand, or I guess in these moments of time, I sit in support of approving the blueprints as revised and drafted. Thank you.
Thank you for sitting in support. That was great. And last, Terry Marler. Patrick, we have Mr. Finerty, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yes, I live around the corner from the proposed facility, and I think it's important to recall that the original zoning change was premised upon the use of an existing facility.
Can you possibly turn down the YouTube or whatever other thing you're listening on?
I'm not listening on anything. Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Go ahead. I'm just around the corners from.
Did you have any further comments?
I do, but there seems to be two tracks playing. Recall that the original zoning change was premised upon.
We don't know where it's coming from. So why don't you just go ahead with your comments, and again, hopefully you can not pay attention to that other thing you're listening to.
Yeah, no, no problem. I can speak over it. The original zone change was predicated upon our use of an existing facility. The use we're talking about today changes that facility. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Very good. So the original zone change was predicated upon a use, the use of an existing facility. That was not only in the 2016 staff report, but also in the correspondence, which was part of the staff report from Manna. Yet today, what's being considered is a facility that's twice as large as originally considered with a lot coverage that goes from 13.8% to 31%. There's also, the statement was made that the operational plan doesn't change, which I don't follow. Manna indicates they're coming out of a 700-square-foot facility into a 7,000-square-foot facility, so 10 times the size. Is it conceivable that there would not be additional staff and presumably additional clientele, given the larger facility? That becomes an issue in the area of parking, which has been discussed tonight, due to a lack of zoning enforcement in the neighborhood. Presently, on-street parking is a continuing problem. Manna is clearly going to increase that difficulty for the neighborhood. So what started as a worthy and appropriate project for the neighborhood has morphed into a overly intense use that involved no community outreach whatsoever. If you look beyond the 2016 walk of the neighborhood, I just don't understand the process or the purpose of such an intense use on this site. This is a long-neglected neighborhood that's finally, due to private efforts, turning around, and right in the middle of it will be this 7,000-square-foot warehouse and distribution I'd like you to reconsider the application. And barring a willingness to do that, I respectfully request that the commission deny the project.
Thank you. Last, we have Terry Marler, who is not with us either. With that, we'll go back to staff for comments. With that, we'll go back to staff for comments. If they have any.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
If I may, while you're looking, if you have any further comments, there's a few comments regarding, from, from the commissioners regarding some conditions that I think we need to flush out a little bit more to make sure we have clarity with, not only with the commissioners before they make a decision on this project, but also with applicant as well. One of the commissioners mentioned construction, but before I get to that one, I do want to talk about condition number 38, which I think Chair, you mentioned regarding, whether there's a condition regarding markings or signage of some kind. And condition number 38 does, excuse me for a second while I toggle over here. So, condition number 38 does talk about the loading area and it does provide for appropriate signage. I think my recommendation would be to keep it as is right there. I think if you try to add markings, it would create more confusion. I think when we use the word appropriate, I think they have this timing as the applicant made, made a comment about is there's a timing for when deliveries are made versus when the pantry is open. So, I think with appropriate signage, I think we're covering the concern about the loading area. The next one is two parts that has to do with the construction and the commissioner made a comment about, and it's, it's one of the more typical ones we have when we have a big construction project, knowing parking and then neighborhood, it might be an issue. And we do have condition number eight, which talks about construction hours, and that's the standard one saying it's seven to seven. Construction workers and vehicles are not to be permitted to congregate in the neighborhood or on-site before, after the construction hours. But then we have that, the standard in which we, we try to phase it so all the construction vehicles are parked on-site. And I'm not sure I heard applicant clearly on, on his comment, but it's concerning because I think he made a comment, he would do his best efforts, reasonable efforts to, to make that happen. And, and I certainly appreciate that. What I don't want to do is create a condition that's a shall versus a best practices if possible, what's reasonable. So, typically, we have a condition and if we were to approve this project and you were to approve this condition, it would read something to the effect of during any and all construction phases, phases of this project, all construction vehicles, including all contractor and subcontractor employee vehicles, are to be parked on applicant's property. Now, when I heard the applicant make a comment after Commissioner Newman's request, he made a comment, I believe, that it's not necessarily always going to be possible that can happen. So, either we shouldn't have the condition because it's, makes it as mandatory, which I'm not sure the can, the applicant can agree to, or we could possibly say, in addition to this statement I just made, if during a construction, the construction phase, construction vehicles cannot reasonably be parked on applicant's property, applicant will submit a construction, employee, and vehicle parking plan to CDD with alternative parking site locations. Again, it's not very specific because you have to look at a plan. What I think everyone's trying to do is avoid impacting the neighborhood with construction vehicles for a project. And I think the goal is to keep most of the, if not all of the parking for construction on-site. But as he said, when you have a tractor or you have something that's going to be a larger vehicle for a certain phase, you might have this difficulty of having all the contractors parked there. Again, that leaves it open. It's not, you know, I'm trying to write this as we go, but trying to think of not having it so, it gives them an option actually to, if they can't do it, then they're going to talk to us about what an alternative plan would be that CDD could actually use and discuss with them. So, it's an open dialogue about how do we solve a problem? If, if staff has other concepts for this kind of condition, we'd certainly like to hear about it. But I think we need to address that before we get any further with closing this hearing.
Agreed, agreed. Any other staff comments?
Yes. We have a couple of comments in, in response to Mr. Fennerity's comments. The first one is that he had some concerns that if the existing Manas operation currently is contained within 700 square feet and the new operation is proposed at approximately 7,000 square feet, he doesn't understand how the operation of Manas would not change. So, we do want to make note that while they may occupy a building that is 700 square feet right now, Manas does spill out onto the rest of the property outside of the building. So, the space that they actually occupy for their use is significantly larger than 700 square feet right now. The second point that he made was concerned that the use was overly intense and in working with Manas over several years, one of the main goals was to keep everything inside the building. A lot of the issues that Manas has right now and a lot of the code enforcement complaints that the city has received is because their use spills out, outside of the building into other portions of the property that are visible or cause impacts to other neighboring properties. So, while it is a fairly large addition, it is better that the proposed uses can all be contained within the site itself. The third comment that he made that we wanted to address was he is correct. To our knowledge, we are not aware that Manas did any additional community outreach since the 2016 application.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
I think we'll go to the applicant then for additional rebuttals, specifically Mr. Pett and Mr. Aerosoff, if you can, Aerosmith, if you can respond to city attorney's comments with regard to keeping the, the parking and other issues on-site and then specifically the outreach program, I'd appreciate it.
I think I'll handle that. As far as the parking, it's very common to have sites where the building occupies even 100% of the site and contractors have a, a parking management plan when they can't park on the site. And we would expect the exact same thing here. I would imagine with lay-down area and a job site trailer, there probably will be very little on-site parking for contractors. So, it'll be a requirement that they have an off-site parking plan and we'd be happy to share that with the city accordingly. I did want to mention though, that we are, as part of this project, creating two additional on-street parking spaces as part of our dedication. So, that's pretty important to understand. And as far as the outreach, Darren, maybe you can talk a little bit more about that?
Certainly, we, I don't think that there was any direct door-to-door knocking going on. Manas has been very vocal in the community about its intent throughout this process. But to Mr. Fennerity's point, we did not walk around door-to-door to get any type of feedback from any of the people that were there or assure them that, you know, what we were planning on was going to ask them or tell them what our plans were. So, to, to his point, he is correct. But we are very transparent and open. We've had pictures available and our website has a pretty, pretty comprehensive view of what we're looking at, but that is probably one we could have done better. In terms of the point that Kristen Rice made regarding our building, we have multiple ship containers on our property in addition to the facility that we're in. And it stretches all the way back into the back service alley. And so, a lot of our storage and a lot of our ability to store is also off-site, which we, we pay money to store things. Food safety is a huge concern for us. So, everything that we can, that can be stored outside is and everything that isn't has to be handled in a different way. But absolutely 100%, we are not going to a 10x the facility. We are definitely trying to bring it all in and, and keep our food safety at utmost concern.
Thank you. Anything else either of you wanted to say in rebuttal?
I, I want to bring up something that is important for everybody to, to remember. We do not feed homeless people. That's not our job. If somebody comes to us and they don't have a home, we refer them to the proper sources and we do partner with the city in referring people out. A lot of our volunteers are driven to our location and picked up from our location. When people, when families, when college students and elderly people or people that lost their job recently are in food crisis, they come to us and we are organized in a fashion that does not allow a lot of people on our site. We do intake qualifying. We make sure that the people coming in are, are not abusive to the system, but we also want to make sure that we're serving people that are in our community. And I do believe that when you look at the efficiencies that we've built in in terms of our scheduling and when things can happen, whether they are food coming in or food going out, it is not chaos. It is very well organized on a day-by-day and, and an hour-by-hour basis. And we are trying to add dignity to this process, which is not very dignified in our current location. We're going to allow people to, to have some privacy. We're going to allow people to have choice and we are going to address a lot of the issues that are concerning to them just by virtue of the construct of this building and, and the privacy that it allows and the flow of the building, you know, as it's designed. So, I think it's important to understand that we are not creating a more intensive use than we have where we're at.
Thank you. Mr. Heer.
Yes, I just want to make sure for the applicant and for commissioners, if they are moving to approve this, the condition that I believe Commissioner Newman was, was alluding to, I'm going to try to make this up as I go along here, but the condition would read as follows. During any and all construction phases of the project, all construction vehicles, including all contractors and subcontractor employee vehicles, are to be parked on applicant's property. If during any construction phase, construction vehicles cannot be completely parked on applicant's property, applicant will submit a parking management plan to CDD for approval and compliance that contains alternative parking.
Mr. Heer, can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
My question is, is there's currently construction going on over at the, the corner of Chiquita and Canejo School Road? And I was wondering if the construction site there is being held to the same standard that we're now asking Manas to be held to?
Unfortunately, I, I mean, I know the project that you're referring to, I, I just couldn't tell you right now if we have that condition on there or not.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because, you know, as, as general, we're not trying to, to, to set about demands or complicate these things further than what we're being asked to address. And I'm just asking, are we getting into the weeds on this?
If I may, Chair?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
With construction projects, it's fairly typical to have a parking management plan as part of the overall construction management plan. This wouldn't be any different for Manas per se than any other project that would come before a commission or pull a permit from the building department that could have impact on neighboring properties. It's something that this commission has done on various projects throughout the last year, anything from a single-family home being built to a large commercial or industrial project.
If I may, since I brought it up in the first place.
Go ahead.
My, my intent in raising it was just not, not to burden the neighborhood during the 10 to 14 months the applicant estimates the project will take. I'm fine with having a parking management plan that, that has no, no on-site requirement. That all the parking is someplace else, I'm fine. I'm also fine with what Mr. Heer, the, the exact language Mr. Heer just read. I just want to be sure that we're all in sync on this, that if we go forward with the, the base requirement of parking on-site and if that can't be done, then there's a parking management plan or my preference would be just a parking management plan. If either or both of those are acceptable to the applicant, then I think we can move forward.
They are acceptable.
Well, let's, let's do this kind of in an organized way since we kind of fell apart here, but let's, first of all, Mr. Heer made up or came up with an idea in terms of something. Let's ask the applicant if they would be agreeable with that, had comments about that, and then we'll go to each commissioner for questions. Applicant, Mr. Pett and Mr. Aerosmith, are you okay with what Mr. Heer proposed?
We are okay with it, yes. That's acceptable and, and in my experience and this is something that would be reasonable and normal. So, we're okay with that and we would want to comply.
Okay, so let's go, I mean, again, I'm not saying that, that we would go for it. Let's go through each commissioner now and have them ask questions and then we can go through it. So, commissioner questions?
I'll go again, just because, because I started it. So, my, my question was, we have, we have another construction site literally up the block that I'm not clear has any stipulation like that. The other thing I'm aware of on that street is that there's a significant amount of employee parking for businesses that are along the boulevard there that happens in that neighborhood. And so, I know that there's, there's a lot of demands and so, I'm curious, is, we're not the parking or the, the Streets Commission, we're not traffic, we don't do any of those things. So, I'm just curious if this is part of our purview. And in light of that, I'd be disinclined to, to, to add a stipulation of that nature.
So, my comment would be, I, I would actually have to check to see what conditions are on any project. There are times when we have conditions on a project that they are not, the applicant is not complying with and therefore it is a violation. But to be specific on this one, I would have to, literally have to check to see what the conditions were for the apartment complex project I think that you were referring to. And again, as far as other parking, I, I think we all recognize that there might be an issue over there. The, the challenge is if you, if you know that there's parking issues, there are choices where the community itself can do some type of parking request where it's permit parking. I don't think we're going there. But I think the other issue, I think to Mr. Newman's point is, we have looked at this sometimes when we know that there might be parking conflicts and so, Mr. Newman's, I, and I won't, I won't speak for him, but I think his comment was basically, we do have a concern about that, so we want to try to put a condition that puts a, puts a, makes the applicant go through some effort to try and make sure the parking impacts to the street in that area are alleviated to the best of their ability. And so, we have this condition and again, this is more of a hybrid where we're not sure they can all be on that property. I think the applicant's comments, which I take as, as true, where they're going to do their best job to try to do that. And if not, then they would submit a parking management plan for a location. I will also say that we have many jobs where we do require the contractor to find a location where they put major vehicles or large vehicles for a construction plan. So, they don't, they're not parked on the street, they're, they're not parked on-site per se due to this, the phase of the construction site, but they're put in another location. In fact, I think, I know that the city actually sometimes leases property for a big construction project because we have some extra space and we lease it for a period of time, six to eight months or to a, a year probably, where we lease it for that purpose. And again, this is just, if it can't be on the property, we want to try to make sure that they follow a management plan that they will comply with to alleviate that issue.
And we can go through that discussion as part of our comments first after we close the public record. So, let's kind of see if we have any further questions. Commissioner Bus, did you have any more questions of staff or the applicant?
I think I'm good, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, I think with that, we can actually go ahead and close the public hearing, at which point then we can entertain comments from commissioners or a motion.
This is Commissioner Newman.
Go ahead.
So, I'm, like Mr. Prescott, I'm a strong supporter of Manas, especially at this time. I'm okay with the. I'm okay with the additional condition as Mr. Heer constructed on the fly. It's pretty impressive. I would agree with Commissioner Bus that we're not in the traffic business. That's definitely true, and we shouldn't be making traffic rules. At the same time, as been pointed out, we do routinely impose conditions as part of a larger application. And I don't think we should be contributing to part of the problem ourselves. And that's really the spirit in which I think this discussion was moving. So with that, I'd like to move that we approve SUMJ 2019-70323 and UUW 2019-70324 with the additional condition as Mr. Heer drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Other commissioner comments or comments at this point?
Commissioner McMahon?
Go ahead.
Manette has fulfilled a need in our community for many years, and it's unfortunately growing bigger. And I think that we, as a city, need to support them as much as we can. And I feel like they've worked really well and hard to, with city staff, to make this the best thing, the best fit for our community. And I will support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Any other comments?
This is Commissioner Cohen. I support Manette's purpose as well. I think this adaptive reuse project is creative. They've gone through extensive architectural review. They've included some interesting solar panels and things to be energy efficient, which I support. And I think this is a great use for the community, and I support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. I will add, lastly, I think you guys have been amazingly patient and forceful in trying to get this process done with the city staff over a long period of time. It has a great benefit to our community. I think the last one, last speaker is Mark O'Callas at his best. I'm looking forward and excited about this prospect. This is just a great thing. I really commend both of you for, or the whole team, so to speak, for putting this together and really pushing forward and bringing what hopefully will be a great part of our community. So I would be in favor as well. So Madam Secretary, please prepare us for a vote.
Mr. Lanson, can I say one thing?
Of course.
I just wanted to add my support for this project. I think in light of the fact that we're a city of well over 100,000 people now, the fact that we are able to support the people who are, who need food and need our assistance in a facility that's only 7,000 square feet is amazing. In the month that I've been stuck at home, I've seen food lines in Texas go two miles long. And so I think it's a mark of amazement that we are able to take care of our own within this community. And I praise the work that Manette does to make that happen. And the fact that they're going to take a building that is woefully outdated, they're going to improve the sidewalks, they're going to improve the appearance of that building and make it a place that people can go to with dignity is something that I very much, I very much support.
Thank you, Commissioner Bus. Madam Secretary, can you please get us ready for a vote?
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Item eight, department reports. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Chair. No reports this evening.
Item nine, commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Any commissioner comments or 1234 reports?
Commissioner McMahon?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to commend the staff. The public does not know the extent that went behind the scenes to get this meeting going. The staff has worked very hard and, I think, committed hours and hours to get this right and to make this process as easy as it could be under the circumstances. And I just wanted, I just wanted to let the public know that it wasn't easy, and they did it, and they did it really well. And I commend them.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Any other comments?
Commissioner Newman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to strongly concur with Commissioner McMahon's comments. I've been very impressed that the entire city government has remained open for business, maybe in a different form, but has done everything and moved heaven and earth to make sure that the city government continues to operate to serve the citizens. And I commend all the efforts that have been done to that end. On another point, it seems that while we'd all like to get back to normal as soon as we can, of course, that's a really laudable goal. The effects of this crisis may last longer than any of us would like them to last. And I don't have anything specific in mind, but it may be prudent for us to, in looking at future applications, to take this pandemic and think about what effects this pandemic or future pandemics might have on the application and what we can do as commissioners and as citizens to address that and to build in mitigations for that in any future projects that we consider.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other comments?
Commissioner Bus here. I also want to thank staff. I want to thank the citizens of the city. Our numbers as far as people have become ill and the number of people who have stayed at home, stayed out of the parks, adhered to our safer-at-home guidelines has been amazing. And I think it's very reflective in the number of lives we've stayed in both the city and in this county. And so I can't thank everyone enough for everything they're doing out there to stay home and to stay healthy.
Thank you, Commissioner Bus. Any other comments? I will just say, for me, myself, and I, obviously, stay home. If you can't, you have to work. Know that we all appreciate you, the hospital staff, police, fire, even at the grocery stores. Just the respect level of the community that I see when I go out, even walking in my neighborhood and seeing the dance that everybody has to play to stay six feet away. Do they cross the street? Do they get this way? I mean, we're all trying so hard to make sure that this doesn't yet to be a huge issue in this area. And just please be nice to the people at the grocery stores. I'm seeing sometimes people get a little frustrated because they're, you know, the person won't take their credit card, whatever. Realize everybody is worried for their lives and trying to do a good job, at the same time trying to be respectful. So just do your best to understand we're all part of the same community, no matter what politics or other stuff you may believe right now. We're all part of the same community. It's important for us to be together. Also, please go on and do the census, get involved in our general plan update and all the other stuff that's going on. With that, Mr. Parker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
None this evening, Chair.
I think that's it. I thank everybody for participating. The meeting is now adjourned, and the next meeting will be on May 11th at 6:00.